Okay, six o'clock, we're gonna call on July fifth. Education meeting in order. Roll call, please, woman.
Jenny, go ahead. Very good. Sean Hamilton.
Here.
Scott Harmon.
Here.
Cindy Klein. Yes, Steve Rogers.
Here.
Thank you.
Here. Please. I believe it is unified in the United States of America as a republic. Welcome, everybody. For watching at home and everybody else, I think what we're gonna do is, I think we're gonna let Jack go ahead and talk now. And if we have any questions, we'll ask him, and then you won't have to stay and listen to all this other stuff.
Perfect. So I'm just here to talk about the Drama Club trip to New York, which would take place spring of twenty four. This would be the third time that we've gone, we went in twenty one, two, after COVID, and we had gone. Twenty eighteen, spring twenty eighteen. Basically, it's a trip to New York City. This last time, we flew instead of drove, we flew to New York because the first time we had bus problems. That's kind of flew to New York and then got stranded air wise, but we made it home. So I don't know that there's a great solution to that. But basically, it's four days, three nights in New York City. One of the biggest feedbacks we got when we did it in twenty eighteen, that we switched for twenty twenty two, was that the kids really didn't want as much of the touristy stuff, that they wanted to do kind of more the educational things. So we added two additional workshops that go around. So initially, that trip included three Broadway shows, four workshops with Broadway artists. And then we were able to actually give them another show. We swapped out one of the tourist things and gave them another show. So we saw four shows. That trip was fourteen fifty at that time in twenty twenty two. Drama Club, because we were supposed to go in twenty twenty, had already kind of started fundraising before, obviously, COVID. And everything hit. And so on this last go around, we were able to pay for about eight hundred dollars of each student's trip. So that brought that cost down from fourteen fifty down to seven fifty for every student. So to kind of make sure that. To make sure that we can try and make that accessible. I don't know that we'll be able to cover that much of every student this time around. Like I said, we kind of had double fundraising efforts. But the trip that we're going to do is a similar type thing, over spring break, going for four days, staying in Times Square or Manhattan. Seeing three shows, doing some workshops and just trying to provide some additional educational stuff. So that's how we open to the students that are in the shows, but any Drama Club members, so past crew. If that maybe just comes to Drama Club meetings, that they're not really comfortable being on stage. We don't have the time. We do have a handful of kids that, you know, will do the gatherings or the Broadway review, but not do the show. So that's open to all of them. And like I said, that would be looking at our spring break of twenty twenty four. So that's a kind of a general overview. The touring company that we would be using would be the same that we use before, which is Junior Tours. They provide security at the hotel and all those different things to kind of make sure that work has stayed throughout the trip there. And then I assume we use our same tour at that, who we had the last time, which was her, and she saved us in terms of. Yeah, when the airfare got canceled, she was the one that kind of connected us and got us going. So that's kind of a general overview. I don't want to go too far into specific details. Obviously, shows and stuff aren't big yet, but we won't know what's playing at that given time. But that's kind of a brief overview. After answering any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Something we've done, as Jack said several times, it's great for the kids. They're not familiar to see that. And thank you, Jack, for taking the lead on that. It's a great thing. We really enjoy it. Anybody, any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Happy to be nice, huh?
Uh, no.
You'll enjoy that.
Okay, I see we have to thank Cavielli, Ministry of Defense, not here. You got it.
She said, thank you so much for the celebration and resolution on July, sorry, on June seventh. It has been an honor to work with all of you. Best wishes, Kenny.
I saw her Sunday issue, said repairment hasn't clicked in yet, but I'll put it right now. So we'll see. Okay, any communications from the floor in regard to agenda items or anything in general? Very done, and other items you would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Anybody? Okay, I will entertain a first and second motion to approve the agenda. Thirty minutes and close to thirty minutes from the regular meeting, June fifth, June seventh. May activities, funds report, the May treasures report, the June monthly annual checks report, June payroll, by accounts payable, personnel items, including approval of resignations, deployments, employee transfers, leave requests, retirement requests, extracurricular recommendations, prepare your assignments, and to approve the following building uses as listed. First, second, Dan, moves, we have a second. Mary seconds. Roll call, please, woman.
Danny Hart.
Yes.
There you go. Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Scott Harmon.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes, Steve Rogers.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, administrative reports, anything on yours?
No, I don't believe so. Have to answer any questions?
Anybody have any questions, approve that as a report? Okay with that? Okay, Jim, first time.
Very well. We had quite a few teachers in and worked hard to create some new curriculum, and we had quite a few super sets created too, so they weren't very busy.
So how was the job going so far? All right, good for you.
And, you know, we always do it every year, but the amount of time they put in, it's just, you know, Jen, the team, the time and to be there for them. And they're there first thing in the morning. They wait till I rise up. They do a great job. I mean, they eat, you can tell all the different things that they carry back and forth, and the conversations they have, good and bad, about things. So appreciate all the time you guys put up.
Yeah, absolutely. That's good important work for us, and it's on top things. Anybody have any questions, Jim? All right, Mr. Spencer?
All right, so just a couple of things. Just at the last board meeting, we're authorized me to employ personnel as needed due to elect candidates. These are some of the staff members that we were hired over the last month. If you've got a question, I'd be glad to, but I just, I gotta make sure that the board's aware and we're right with that. I'll give a little bit of an update on that situation here in a couple of minutes. The one other thing, my super tension, of course, not in there, but it goes along with consent agenda. You know, really, when the board approved hiring of extra cracker activities, hired Mr. Greg Wells back as the head baseball coach for the high school RCP. And I just want to take a minute and thank Jerry Dow for stepping up, and we needed somebody to step up for us to take that role. You know, you know what Jerry Dwyer was here before, came back and stepped in, and we had, you know, an opening last summer. He didn't do any wrong, or actually very happy with the job he did. We just thought, you know, contract language kind of leads us to what we have to do sometimes, and it was one of those times. But again, we appreciate the time and his commitment to the, to the baseball program, wishing him the best.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? No. Dan, anything on granddaughter education?
No, sir.
I think a fun thing, one of the first things that's mentioned on there is the, that's the last board controlling, we're informed that health occupations, students took their certification tests. And they did a remarkable job. Ninety-nine percent of the CNAs who's passed, hundred percent of the CNA, which is something in the certified medical system, passed. Hundred percent of the EGTs passed. That number, I mean, it's amazing. It is very good. And it gives, you know, hats off to Jim Shell and her, helps her, helps her learn. But that's kind of something that definitely needed to be mentioned.
Well, I can tell you, my granddaughter took hers in South Carolina, and I think they're going like sixty-six percent, or sixty-one percent. A lot of the people passed that. So if you look at these numbers, this is just amazing for what our, for what our people do over there. So what a great program. Thank goodness for your pastors, but anyway. You know, it is, it is amazing how many percent of this is not, so. Kudos to them, that's for sure. And Dan, if you get a chance, pass that on to them. And Chris, you too, please. Okay, anything, Athletic Curators report, anything there? Any questions about anything there? All right, so any communication from the floor in regard to agenda items or anything in general? And hearing that, let's go ahead and hold business in. You have the second reading?
Yep, second reading, and thanks to Cindy and Steve. They came in this afternoon at five, and we had a meeting, and it lasted only about, what, ninety, ten minutes? It was, it was one of those, hey, we're gonna appreciate when we get the next one that's gonna have ninety-three things on it. But it was a five-year review process, and so we just went through that quickly. The next board meeting, we'll get to it, you know, change that. Thank you guys, too.
Thank you, Cindy and Steve, you're the time, appreciate it. Okay, how about facility improvements plan?
Yes, exciting. I'm sure you all drove up, you see the progress they've made on the road. They started, I believe, it was last Monday. And the progress they've made, they've been here every day, or here before, I don't think before Mr. Smith, it's close. But they're here when we leave, and I appreciate deconstruction, the groups I work with them. So that's done. The middle school flooring project is pretty much complete. If you'd like to see it sometime, let me know. Mr. Smith, if any of us, we can walk you over there and take a look at the floor. And we were very happy the way it turned out, which it looked sharp, to be honest with you. It looked really nice. Same, looks a lot better than the tile was there. So we're glad that's done. Another thing with that is Mr. Smith and I, and Dan, and I couldn't able to, but we were able to meet with Elizabeth Hennessy, with Raymond James. And she gave some ideas and some direction, maybe where we'd go. Probably at the next study session, we'll spend some more time talking about that at the board. But I just want to give you an update on that. So move along with the facilitation improvement plan, and, you know, we got the flooring done there, we've got the road coming in. And except, they've been working every day, so whether it's been nice. So tomorrow they'll be up there and sure do what they need to do, but we're glad to answer any questions if you have any.
So to just, you know, she's the one who goes our bones.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions about that? Thank you. Let's move along. Good. Thanks, Jay. Okay. Staffing?
Staffing update. The nice thing about staffing update is that we are fully staffed right now as far as certain, my staff, yes, thank you, Mr. Smith, not humbled. I know we have some paraprofessionals on some days that I know Mr. Purple was interviewing today already for, but right now, we are staffed fully to our teachers and that. So very excited about that. It's a good thing. You never know what's gonna happen between now and then, but yeah, we're fully staffed and hopefully get our eight positions higher during the next, next few weeks, but be ready to start.
I'll be curious how many districts are fully staffed like we are today. Very fortunate. Thank you again, you guys, for getting on that and getting that done. That's, that's a big deal for us.
Absolutely. The principals and the Mr. Purple and assistant principals spend a lot of time making sure they get people, and I feel like we have pretty good candidates too, correspondents, so very, very happy.
Anything else? Anybody have any questions about any of that? All right, let's go to new business, son. I'll entertain first and second motion to approve the filing and the quarterly drop off report with the regional office of education for the quarter ending April fourth. I'll move, sort of on moves, Steve seconds. This is something we do every year. It's just something we have to do. So roll call, please.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Danny Hart.
Yes. Yes.
I did first and second motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, temporary budget, presented, approved the legal notice for public hearing, and set budgets available for public inspection during the last thirty days, the stadium office, July tenth, two thousand twenty-three, until public hearing six o'clock on Wednesday, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. When some moves, very seconds. Any discussion or anything you want to do, anyone?
So in your package, you have a color free taker, right, for a, we'll look through quickly. Remind the board, like I do every year, that this is the tentative budget. There's no work that's gonna happen between now and final budget, which you'll see in September. This year is probably a little bit different than previous years, because there are several things that are going on that are gonna impact what final budget looks like compared to this. But I'll talk about those at the end of the presentation. So from a very high level, we're anticipating about thirty-eight point seven million dollars in revenue. Thirty-five and a half million of that comes from local sources, as you know, specifically seventeen point three million of it comes from our friend Constellation. So obviously, that is a lot of eggs in that basket. State funds at about two point four million, and we're projecting a federal dollar of about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The chart that you have kind of gives you a sense of how the revenues come into the different funds. Remember, we use government accounting, and so funds ten through ninety. Ten being the education fund is the biggest piece of it. It's always the biggest piece of it. And a fund like life safety, which is one of the little tiny slivers that's up there toward the top. And sort of you'll see that detail if you get farther here through the slide down, and you'll flip your page. We're anticipating expenditures at thirty-nine and a half million dollars. Again, this is paying the roster as well as the benefits for all the people that the board employs. As well as the facilities projects that we have spun up that we're, that we've already started on, as Mr. Spencer said. These two graphs show expenditures in different ways. The bigger one is by fund, which is what you saw on the previous page, by, by fund. The smaller, it hasn't broken down by object, so things like salaries, benefits, supplies, purchase services, and so on. You'll flip the page to the intended budget, the spreadsheety kind of page. This gives you kind of the gritty detail. What I've done this year is tried to compare what the revenue budget for twenty-three was compared to what the projected revenue budget for twenty-four is, and the potential change. Same is true for the expenditures, where we anticipate revenue over expense to be. And so this is just broken out again by fund. Certainly, if there are questions, or you want to come in and see the detail down to the code level, you certainly can come in and do that. But this is a high level view of what we look to post as the, as a final budget. You put it to the last page. I want to talk briefly about the kind of costs to this, right? Right now, obviously, the board knows we're, we're negotiating with the teachers' collective bargaining group. That will have an impact on what the final numbers adjust out to. Also, as Mr. Spencer moved to, based on the kind of funding discussions that this board has and decisions that they make about some of the capital projects, that might involve some bonding, particularly where certain expenses and revenues fall, is gonna be based on the timing of things. And our architects are helping us with that. We're right now, as you remember, getting ready to go out to bid for a project at the high school for the football field and the track. You'll see more information about that in the, in the next, in the next few weeks. But those are certainly gonna impact what the final budget's gonna look like. Right now, those aren't included in the tentative. I anticipate that there will be something included for them at final, and so that will account for a difference. And then obviously, there are always final adjustments between here and there. We're still waiting on some procurement issues and contracts. And so we just use that kind of two things out between now and the meeting in September. So again, the big picture we're anticipating for next year is about thirty-eight million dollars in revenue. No more than thirty-nine million dollars in expenses, which would post as a deficit budget, I'll remind the board. However, that we typically underspend expenditures, and we typically over receive revenue. And so this is probably as close to a balanced kind of budget as, as you would typically see. So certainly entertain any questions that the board would have, but a lot more to come in discussion of these items at the study session and then at September at our public hearings.
So we don't change, you're looking about eight hundred thousand.
Correct.
Difference here. So will the revenues change, David? They're pretty much the same.
So it depends on what the funding mechanism will be for the capital project. So for example, if the board decides to bond, depending on when those bonds are received, they would book as a revenue, even if they're not extended all in the same fiscal year. Typically, what our strategy has been in the past is we book all the bond revenue in one year and all the bond expenses in the same year, even though we know we're not gonna expend all that money.
Right.
And then over time, you post a larger deficit in future fiscal years as you spend the bond proceeds down. And then by the time it's all over, it all reconciles itself back out. So that might, that's most likely to change, and we'll see between here and final. Good question.
Anybody have any questions? I'll let you guys talk.
Appreciate it again, Jason, for your time and putting us together.
Sure.
Absolutely, thank you. Glad he's on my side. Okay, so roll call on that one, Wanda. I think I got the pushing, so.
Scott Harmon.
Yes.
Mary, you know, Sandy Rogers.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Yes, I almost forgot to vote. All right, so again, we have to take formal action, appoint Jason, so I'm gonna take a first and second motion to approve the appointment of CSBO and Jason Smith for the Title IX and non-discrimination coordinator and the sex equity hearing officer of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. With some moves and Dan seconds. I love this one. Roll call, please, Wanda.
Absolutely.
Danny Hart.
Yes.
Mary, you know, all seven.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for your service, Jay.
Yes, and I will be training Ms. Kenny to take my place. I'm gonna start working that now. Other duties are assigned. Thank you.
You've got that for the floor, if you can. Okay, I'll entertain first and second motion to approve the appointment of Director of Special Populations with Purple as a liaison for student records. The Department of Children and Family Services, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, school year. With some moves and Dan seconds, something we do have to do every year. Roll call, please.
Scott Harmon.
Yes.
Danny Hart.
Yes.
There you go. Yes, Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Cindy Klein. Yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Denver.
Yes. I'll entertain first and second motion to approve the high school band and chorus, FY twenty-five, spring trip to Disney. Mary, so moves? No? All right. Second, go ahead and go.
So, so this is different than what Jack was doing. This was our, this is our band director, I can confirm. Who, he approached me and asked about doing this. So of course, we're gonna go for it, because it's another pace of trip over spring break. It is, again, it'll be not this coming spring break, like Jackson, it'll be the fall of spring break. He like uses an opportunity to get students engaged in, in the, in the band, main course, because it's purple, sorry. I said, good night, of course. And get the groups off the look forward to, but he's trying to build us before, and he will include band as well, but he is our course person. He would like to, agrees to be brought so soon is to provide two different fundraisers to make sure they can try to get some money built up for that. It's a six-day trip. They load up in coach buses, we'll take the buses all the way from here to Orlando. He, he's used these guys before, it's called Bob Rogers Travel. He's had with them the past in other districts. He'd be inside as a student, he might use the same, same one. They would have, they would perform and have some opportunities, kind of. Um, they have, they would perform and have some change, kind of similar to what Jack was talking about. To do some uh tense and clicks at Disney. So some great opportunities there for them. Of course, they're also. Um, but they uh they the cost is around seventeen hundred dollars. It's so hard to tell right now because of fuel costs up and down. That was kind of just a. We're around a number. Um, but uh, you know, it's fine. Once we get closer to that, it gets us, it's not there. So again, it was uh. Not the same year. I make sure it wasn't the same year that Jack's been doing his. And there's nothing else of that at this time. That would be a very.
Any questions about that? Okay, roll call, please, Melinda.
Very good. Yes, Cindy Klein, yes, Danny.
Yeah.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
But heart.
Yes.
Steve Rogers.
Yeah.
And no.
Yes. I'll entertain first and second motion to approve the high school theater department's FY twenty four. During the spring break. The end seconds. Any any questions about that? We heard the Jack had to say about it. Yeah.
Guys are wonderful. So I have no problems with them.
No, no. Are they gonna be great for, as I say, for our kids to be a good thing? Okay, roll call, please, Melinda.
Very good. Danny.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
With heart.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And no.
Yes. Okay, Chris.
Yeah, so just want to bring this up a little bit. We're still wrapping up the uh FY twenty three strategic plan. There are some items that are probably asked the board to carry over. Everything's that we just didn't have time to to get done all the way this year. Um, but we'll get together FY twenty four strategic plan here in the near future and come to the board. We'll prove all that. Um, at this time, I don't believe we'll do the big. Meeting that we did last time. Um, we'll probably do that in a couple of years, maybe, just to see how it's going, but definitely will we get some people involved with that. I didn't answer your question.
Any questions about that? Okay, now let's go ahead and do your evaluation.
So um. My evaluation has to be done. So there's more information coming on that. I just want to kind of get on the radar of everybody that that will probably be sent out.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Laura, I asked Melinda to pull up because years ago. A lot of times we did, Ken's whatever, a couple of years before then, we opened what that. We we have the um, some of us attended superintendent evaluation at the conference, aligned the evaluation to our strat plan, et cetera, et cetera. So I just asked. Last time we did, I just put the initiative, get it out to everybody, so I decided to do the same thing again. So the one is sending this stuff. I'll I'll get along and we'll get it out to everybody.
Good.
Um, my, I'll ask third base opinion. I think my opinion would be good to get some feedback from Bob and Chuck. They haven't gone that long. It's not time for Chris. Um, Chris, I think it'd be good for you to get as much feedback as you can to your first year ago. Um, so I'll get that out to everybody and we'll just again, Chris, I appreciate, but just get on the agenda, get on everybody's radar. We'll get it done after his first year and. And the majority of the evaluations having the strat plan, so, but I'll get that up. We'll get that out and. Get that taken care of.
Okay, so it's on the way. You won't be surprised when you get it done. And just, yeah, just be as honest as you can be because whatever we tell Chris is just what's gonna help him, so. Um, I think he's done a great job so far. We'll just see what happens from there. Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, then I will entertain first, second motion to approve the support staff starting salary as presented. Um, Sean, it's only moves and Dan seconds, Chris, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, real quick. So this, if you remember, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, or through the um. Five percent for our support staff, uh, that did not include our starting pay. This is the uh, the uh, chart that's having their information on it. So. Um, to keep up with the times, we thought about um increasing three percent. The actual starting pay. So when they knew coming in, we increased it from to three percent. So if you look at the very first. Uh, building head secretary, nineteen dollars, now they're at nineteen fifty seven. Um, that three percent also allows us to keep some distance between, oh, we already have hired and newbie. We went five percent, they might eventually pass, and so this keeps the distance from them. Um. It is, like I said, it's less than we gave our overall support staff, which is five, um, but it helps us stay competitive. Um, I think if we stay at the where we were. Then we we start losing that competitive edge with those, and we know how much difficult it is to find aids. And Mr. Purple, who works to tell off, he does a great job for us. Um. But that's really what the the intent of that was, is just to to try to keep up with the times and make sure we're we're being competitive.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, roll call, please, Melinda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Mary Gill, yes, but heart.
Yes.
Yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
And no.
Yes. I'll entertain first and second motion to approve the substitute daily rate of pay increase to one hundred and twenty nine dollars. And then the rate of pay increase for employment sets at one hundred and fifty. So you said moves and I think seconds.
Yes, so as we kind of got through last year in New Year's, so we've been keeping up with, there's been a lot of other super attendants and principals. Asking what their going rate right now is for substitute teachers. Uh, we, I know we're raised this any year to one hundred and fifteen. Uh, we are already at the low end in that, unfortunately. Um, but that's that's what it is right now. It's very competitive to try to get people to come and sub. Uh, because everybody's looking for subs. So this puts us again back in kind of the middle range and and makes us competitive competitive with our local school districts. Um, for the premise subs, um, Mr. Chase and I have been talking. We've got purpose of that the way this for a while. We may have new ones this year. We don't know yet, but um. They 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 commit their time to us. Um, and being at the same rate, we felt like this wasn't uh appropriate. And again, I think with some other school districts that have them. They seem to pay them more than they did their regular subs. Uh, they come in with every day and have a spot and we move them around and. Um, we feel like this is a pretty fair. Fair and competitive rate of.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please, Melinda.
Cindy Klein, yes, Mike Harmon.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Mary Gill, well, Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Steve Rogers.
Yeah.
And no.
Yes. Okay, first and second motion to approve the two year lease agreement of American Capital Financial for the new silent interacting boards, annual cost of. Seventy one thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars and twenty four cents on ground from Williams, go ahead, second. And seconds?
I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Miller, but I think you have a. I think you have an early draft of that. Um.
Is that different in the motion? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
Don't remember. So we've got a.
What's the amount, Mr. Miller?
The amount is forty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety eight dollars and twelve cents.
Is that the right amount?
So it's also a three year lease. Originally, I got numbers for three year lease, which we've numbered, Mr. Miller read. Subsequently, they got back to me with the three year ask. And so it's it would be a three year lease of that equipment and the total would be over forty eight thousand.
Can I have that number again, Mr. Miller?
Forty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety eight dollars and twelve cents.
And that's for a three year lease?
Correct.
Well, I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
To reflect a three year lease of American Capital Financial in the amount of forty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety eight dollars and twelve cents.
Good, thank you.
So whoever seconded these.
Dan seconded, you were there.
Okay, so we'll be voting on the united motion.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any any questions on that, everybody? Okay, roll call, please, Melinda.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Very good. Quit hard.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, any items not adjourned, not known in agenda time or communication from the floor or anything? Well, if not, then at six thirty, I will entertain first and second motion to conclude the session for the purposes considering information regarding the appointment. Employment compensation, discipline, performance, dismissal of specific employees and collective bargaining. And so moves. And Mary seconds, roll call, please, Melinda.
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Sean Hamilton.
Yes.
Cindy Klein, yes, Steve Rogers.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your. Okay, petition please, Steve.
Steve Rogers, board member.
Sean Hamilton, board member.
Boy, I'm a board member. Dan Engel, our board member.
Cindy Klein, board member.
Ken Miller, board member.
Chris Spencer, superintendent.